Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich Committee of the Hall meeting on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are now live on YouTube. I will now do a roll call of council. I, Councilor Grant, am present and chairing this meeting. Mayor Shance.
Present.
Councilor Bryant.
Present.
Councilor Burgess sends his regrets. Councilor Cudow.
Present.
And Councilor Schlenk.
Present.
Thank you. So we will now move into a public resolution to reconvene in open session. Do I have a mover? Councilor Cudow and a seconder, Councilor Bryant, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. One of the knowledge of the land on which we live has been here from time memorial and that the indigenous people have lived here from time immemorial. I thank the Chinatown, also called the Atawandran, the Anishinaabe, the Haudenosaunee, who have lived here and cared for this land who's and who continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora and fauna and the land that sustains us. Are there any disclosures of culinary interests? Seeing none? Are there? There are no items to come forward from closed session. We have no public meeting. But we do have a delegation here with us tonight as well. So this evening, we have Bev Evans, Kelly Meisner, and Cheryl Peterson of Elmira District Community Living with a delegation for council. As you approach the podium before you begin your delegation, I have some instructions for you. You have a maximum of seven minutes to speak unless council or the clerk has set a different time. There will be a timer on the screen and you will hear a warning when you have one minute and another when your time is up. Once you are finished, please wait for questions of clarification from council. When there are, when there are no more questions for you, please return to your seat. You may stay for the rest of the meeting or leave quietly when you want. Council discussion and debate will start when all questions of clarification have finished. Welcome, Ms. Evans, Ms. Meisner, and Ms. Peterson. Please begin when you're ready.
Honorable Mayor Shance, honorable councillors, thank you very much for welcoming us to your meeting this evening. We represent Elmira District Community Living, a nonprofit organization which has been in existence for sixty years, providing support to individuals with disabilities and housing. The reason we wanted to speak to you tonight has to do with Reedwoods Road. Reedwoods House was one of the original residences, the very first residence that Elmira District Community Living ever opened. It was donated to the association. In your package, there is a letter which was addressed very late in March from our Board of Directors. Their names on there are probably your friends and neighbors or colleagues. Additionally, four new members have joined the board. Tom Galloway, Leanne Quinn, Linda Waltz, and Taylor Sanderson. They are all in agreement with this request. In the letter, it outlines the challenges we're experiencing with that road. The wheelchair van is an expensive vehicle, admittedly, but the repairs to that vehicle are astronomical for an association like ours, which relies on funds through charitable donation to repair vehicles. We also have individuals who have damage to their wheelchairs just from riding in the van on that road. There are three shifts of workers. I'm sure you are aware in October to March, a lot of them are driving in the dark to get to their place of work. It makes that residence less desirable as a place to work. That is, in fact, a place where full support is needed. So we really do have a challenge in finding support workers at this time in this economic climate. And this adds to that stress. With me tonight is Cheryl Peterson, on my right, executive director to almost two hundred employees. And on my left is Kelly Meiser, our new board president of Elmira District Community Living. I know that in the package, there are photos. You will see the Reedwood residents and the people there. That little piece of heaven is what we're talking about tonight. It's about one mile in from the corner of Arthur Street where the residence is. And there are gardens and beautiful little pathways in that area as well. I'm going to turn this to Cheryl now.
Hello. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to all of you tonight. The Reedwoods Road does need to be paved. The condition of the road has been a concern of ours for many years. And as you can see from the information we provided, and Bev has talked about that the wear and tear and costs to our repair are very expensive accessible vehicles are ongoing and recurrent. None of the other seven vehicles in our fleet require the same extensive repairs. Our staff who travel the road every day to and from work experience the same type of damage to their vehicles. There are twelve people who live at Reedwoods who travel that one point one kilometers of that road to go to their day program five days a week and to attend medical appointments and activities in their community. Ten of those people rely on the wheelchairs as part of their daily living. The wheelchair is part of who they are. There's been regular ongoing maintenance on those wheelchairs resulting in constant tightening of loose bolts and nuts. This is a real safety concern and another cost. Quanis Transit uses that road five days a week, twice a day. Their drivers constantly complain to our staff about how brutal the road is and have voiced their concerns to township staff as well. With the reconstruction of Church Street, we are very concerned that more people will be using the Reedwoods Road as a detour to come in and go out of town and into town. Not only is the condition of the road going to get worse because of the increase in traffic, there's a great chance that there could be accidents will happen as people swerve to avoid the potholes and travel down the opposite side of the road to avoid that washboarding. Two thousand and nineteen was an exceptionally bad year. Along with many calls to the township, we went to the paper that year and had an article written highlighting the hazardous condition of the road. And yet in two thousand and twenty-one, according to this article that I saved, the township spent millions of dollars on the largest paving program the township has ever implemented, and that was in November twenty-five, November twenty-fifth. Yet the Reedwoods Road wasn't part of that program. Now is the time to prioritize the Reedwoods Road and include it in township's two thousand and twenty-four budget. Thank you.
Thanks for having us, everyone. I'm Kelly and I'm here as the newly elected board president for EDCL amongst other advocacy pieces that I have. And this is obviously really important to me because of an accessibility issue for sure. We, Kate's Cause has actually recently partnered with Elmira District Community Living to bring a Van Ramm chat bike. It is a rickshaw bike that has two e-batteries with it to support accessibility for all and really help to have an innovative opportunity in our township. So we're really excited about this. But we want all of our residents to be able to participate in it. We have amazing trail systems that are accessible for our residents in this area, but we need to be able to get them there and we need to be able to do it safely and in an inclusive manner and in an accessible manner. So looking at this road and considering it as part of your two thousand and twenty-four budget is going to be really meaningful on a big scale because that means that staff that are either they're driving or maybe they're even cycling into work. We have a lot of local staff members who can access that easily. Our residents will either roll or stroll on that, on the, really noticeable. They'll roll or stroll out in their community. It's really important for them to be out and feel it, it helps them to feel more included and valuable members of our township, which they are. So we're looking to expand that accessibility option by bringing awesome projects and we're looking for the township to please follow through with an awesome commitment here to help take care of our, our individuals that are vulnerable and deserve the same accessibility and inclusivity that all of our residents receive. So we really appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from council?
I was gonna prompt that, yeah, but if you be. Uh, Councilor Cudow, then Mayor Shance.
Thank you, Chair, through you to the delegates. I was wondering, I heard from the presentation that Reedwoods is about one point one kilometer in from Arthur Street. Is that correct?
Correct.
So would you be looking for paving for the whole strip of Reedwoods or just for that one point one kilometer from Arthur to your resident?
Excellent question, Nathan. Thank you for letting us clarify. Originally, we were asking only for that amount and we knew that the ask in March would probably be stretching everybody for this year. We would like it for this year, but we know to ask for, you know, the two thousand and twenty-four budget. And it is the distance from the highway to the building and not farther. And Mayor Shance.
Mayor Shance. Um, we talked about possibility of some kind of cost sharing with the township as a partnership to to move it up as it's not on our priority list at the moment based on traffic volume alone. Can you speak to, to your, where you stand on that? Just so councils aware?
Thank you, Mayor Shance. We appreciated the option to discuss with our board the possibility of sharing the cost of paving at one point one kilometers. The meeting was held June the sixth, and at that time, there was a vote saying, no, it was not a responsibility of a community living organization to be paying for the paving to their building. So even though I thought it was a great concept for us to consider, it was not accepted at the board.
Thank you. Councilor Schlenk.
Um, going down a worst case scenario, how's the road right now? And, and we limp by this year, next year possibly with better grading, more frequent grading of the road. What can we do in our end to help on a short term?
Um, actually, I was out there this evening before I came out here and to talk to the staff and just say, like, I, I drove down the road and it's wet. So it's been, it's been whatever you do to get it wet. Yep. And, and if you drive down the middle of that road, it's good. But as soon as you had to move over to the right or especially coming back, it's, it is really bad. So when I talked to the staff about it and I said, so what? How would you grade the condition of the road right now? And they said if it was out of ten, if the ten was being worse, it'd be a seven. And I said, why? And they said, because we come down here every day. Like they, they figured it out. They make thirty-four trips a day. Like with using our van, the staff going back and forth, like Bev said, on three shifts. And that doesn't even count for like visitors or maintenance or contractors coming out there. So that's quite, you know, a lot of, of travel. So if the grading was maintained, the last grading that was done was just after the long weekend in May. There hasn't been, as far as we know, as the staff, there hasn't been anything in June yet. So can consistent, yeah, regular grading would be very helpful.
Mayor Shance. Is there any other questions for the delegates? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also wanted to add that we appreciate being first on your snowplow schedule. That is a positive change that is made, and I think it has been an increase in grading. Is that correct over the year? An increase in the number of times? Well, we want to thank you for everything, then. Thank you all very much. Good night.
Thank you very much. You may return to your seat if you wish. Are there, is there any other further discussion on this request? Mayor Shance.
Yeah, if I could ask Mr. Poupay about grading schedules and priority and, and what it would take. I, I think the letter, I think somewhere in the article. I'm not sure if it's in my notes or in, in the, the letter, the, what it would cost to pave that one kilometer.
Yeah, thank you through you, Chair Grant, to Mayor Shance. I think staff have met with the group and we had some constructive discussion and tried to come up with ways because I think Mayor Shance pointed out some of the challenges. It's not a high volume roadway. It's only about a hundred cars a day. However, it's a very unique situation we have, and I think that was acknowledged by everybody. We did some math and we figured the one point one kilometers to convert a gravel road to asphalt would be approximately three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to do that stretch. The roadway itself is unique because it's about three point eight kilometers total from Arthur to Northfield, and it's got a, a bit of a jog in it there, too, a couple of bends. We know there's horse and buggy traffic there. That's why we would not recommend surface treat. Don't think that would be a good use of dollars. We think we would have to go from gravel to asphalt to, to sustain the road. But the whole road would be about one point three million. So therein lies a challenge, right? That's a very significant cost for a very low volume roadway. So I think that if, you know, a couple of options could be, council could consider paving of the one point one kilometers. We would roll it into our paving program potentially next year, which is already sitting at about two point seven million. That would push us over three million next year for paving. And I just want council to be aware, too, that we're showing a lot of the venture funding next year as well, unfortunately. So we are typically a one-year budget with a five or a four-year forecast. And it just on the approved budget right now, it's showing as upper government funding. We just didn't have the resources to even fund our current capital program of two point seven million. So I just want to to highlight that. I think we're going to have some more wrestling to do, obviously, at budget deliberation time. It, the, the challenge, too, from an additional service perspective, I think that, that creates a problem if we were going to provide additional services from a grading perspective. Gravel roads are labor intensive. Staff would be happy to look to convert all of our gravel roads if possible, but there's not enough monies available, obviously. But it just, it, it does create a bit of the have and have not situation. But again, we are trying to be respectful of the very unique situation. We did speak to EDCL and they could confirm that they have no intention of leaving. I think that was another part of this, too. It is their first location they had shared with us, and this is something they really have created a beautiful space for the residents there. And resurfacing of the roadway would permit their residents to be able to traverse off the property, which is quite a thing for them, too. It's not, you know, something I think we all take for granted of, but in this situation with residents who are sort of bound in the conditions that they are, is to be something that'd be very beneficial to them. So it's, it's, it's quite the challenge that we're facing, but that's just some of the, the numbers and some of the facts that we heard.
Thank you. A follow-up for Mayor Shance and then Councilor Schlenk.
Yeah, thank you. Jared, what does it cost to grade the road and how often do we usually grade it? And what, what would it cost to, to do that grading more often?
That's, it's a good question to you, Chair Grant, the Mayor Shance. I think what would be, probably be best if I got, I don't have those numbers available. We, we are pretty consistent with the way we grade. We obviously grade after, in the spring, we look to apply calcium stabilization, which it sounds like it's occurred already. And this road is not up for, I don't believe this road is up for re, resurfacing this year. That's around a seven or eight year cycle. So I, I'll have to look into see when that was last done. But I think that's information we should follow up with council on and we can get a better picture. Does, would council prefer that ahead of, of budget or is that something we could just carry into budget deliberations with?
Is there a preference?
I, I think, I guess, um, I, I haven't quite processed the whole picture yet. So you only grade the road once in the spring. You don't grade it through the season at all?
Sorry, there, there will be, there would be probably twice a year, possibly three times a year that we could, we would grade throughout the year.
Councilor Schlenk.
Following up on Mayor Shance's comments and questions, I guess I'd be curious as new councillor to understand our grading process, protocols, and costs in general terms, probably before budget because we get overloaded a bunch of time and understand, okay, two or three times a year, when do we do it? What triggers grading? Is it routine? Is there complaint basis? So we have better understanding and better discussion at the right time and be able to meet the needs of our residents.
Councilor Cudow.
Thank you, Chair, through you to Director Poupay. Just wondering, is this one, what's the long-term plans with Reedwoods? Is it ever going to be fully paved? Is it on the schedule to be, you know, in the distant future even?
Yeah, good question. Through you, Chairman Grant, or Chairperson Grant, to Councilor Cudow. At the, at the volume of vehicles on this road, it would never be converted at this stage. We would have, we would have many more other priorities on gravel roads that we would be looking to attend to. And even converting surface treated to asphalt probably would take precedent over, over Reedwood. I think the difference here is the uniqueness of, of the use at this property.
As a follow-up, would you envision a situation where the road could get used more if it was fully paved? I mean, it is just north of Elmira. Perhaps it could be a corridor for people to use.
Yeah, to get through, I think with the bends in there, it wouldn't be something we would look to promote there. You would have Tillman just north of that's probably a better road to, to cut across there, even though it's, it's slightly north. You've got some two ninety-degree bends on the road.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, seeing none. Is there any wish to take action on this? Mayor Shance.
I guess, um, two things. I don't think we're in a position to, to make it happen this year in any event. And so, Mr. Poupay, in terms of grading, is there any benefit, any difficulty with grading it a little more often this year? To, to kind of keep it smoother? Or is that, again, to Councilor Schwinn's question, I, I don't really understand the rationale for the grading and, and what it means throughout the summer.
And through, through Chairperson Grant to Mayor Shance, I think what I would propose if it was acceptable to council is that we just package up exactly what our program looks like today. And we can, we can characterize the class of roads, how we attend them, what we do, costs. And then I think that can feed into this discussion and we can present that to council. And if it's council's will to provide some additional service levels to any, any roadways that can be dealt with in another council setting, well ahead of budget. So I think I could commit to an August timeframe. I think we'll do that. We'll take the summer break if that's, if council's comfortable with that and come back. First meeting in, in August with all that information, or we could do that through email, too.
Councilor, or sorry, Mayor Shance.
In, in terms of looking at grading or hard surfacing it, I, I could wait till budget for that, but the grading piece, I, can you bring us something next week at the council meeting just so that we can if it makes sense to grade it more often, we should be doing that through the summer. I, I just I, I don't know if that makes sense.
That's fine for us.
Councilor Schlenk.
I echo those comments. I think you mentioned earlier that Northern Brother Township's having resurfacing done. I know Cedar Springs on the way, sorry, Reedwoods is on the way to Cedar Spring for that grader. Let's make a plan of trying to make a pass or two as those other roads are being gravelled. Would be my preference this summer.
So for clarity, then we'll bring back some information at next, next council meeting next week, and then we can have further discussion.
Mayor Shance.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And then the, the question of the, excuse me, the paving will feed into the budget cycle then.
Yeah, Councilor Cudow.
Sorry, not to belabor this, but because the grading schedule might be, you know, several months between, is there anything that could be done as a stopgap measure, like spot treatment, hole treatment if there is potholes along that one point one stretch? Because, I mean, some of these bills that have come forward are unacceptable for an NGO to, to be faced with. So surely there is something else that we could be doing to maintain that road and just ensure the safety and drivability of it, you know, between now and the next budget deliberation.
And, and I guess, do you, Chair Grant, to Councilor Cudow, what we try to do is align ourselves with minimum maintenance standard. Being the low volume of road it is, it, it's, uh, it's, it's not required to attend. So it would be a higher level of service for this class of roadway. I'm not sure if it's a class five or or six roadway, but we would be elevating a service level on a roadway that, that, that doesn't require that per maintenance standard. So I just want council to be aware that that is, you know, it's, it's certainly in council's purview to do, but we have a lot of class five and six roadways that, you know, not with the same use, mind you. So, you know, we have higher priority gravel roads, I would suggest, that, that require additional maintenance. So I don't think we're out of line. I appreciate it. It's not the service level that EDCL is looking for, for the use. But I think we've been compliant with legislation. So just want council to be aware that that could be an increase in that service level. But that's something, again, we can, I think, for, for, for council's benefit, let's, let us package all that up on our, on our grading of road systems, what that looks like. And I think we can have a more fulsome discussion next week then.
Thank you. I just don't think we need a motion for that. We just kind of, that's direction. Yeah. Is there any other discussion on that? Seeing none, I, I think we have some direction on, on that topic. All right, thank you. So we have no unfinished business, which does bring us to our consent items before we pass, pass a motion approving and receiving the consent, consent agenda for information. Does anyone in council want to remove anything for discussion? All right, seeing none. I will need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councilor Cudow and seconded by Councilor Schwinn. All those in favor are, yep, that's passed. Okay, so. Are there any items to be pulled from the information package for further discussion? Don't see any. That brings us to staff memos and reports. We have Councilor Cudow, the co-chair of the working group, will provide council with an overview of their memo.
Thank you, Chair, through you. It is my pleasure as co-chair, as you mentioned, of Woolwich two S L G B T Q plus ad hoc working group to present to council this memo. So the working group is proposing a pride window sticker campaign to support and to recognize the local two S L G B T Q plus community. These rainbow stickers, they're signaling acceptance and inclusivity for the two S L G B T Q plus community. And it's really an attempt to help normalize the visibility of the community amongst local businesses. So the group is seeking three hundred dollars from the EDI grant to purchase one hundred and twenty-five stickers. These stickers will then be provided free of charge to interested businesses that would like to display them. So the campaign also intends to engage the BIAs, both Elmira and Jacobs, for promoting and distributing the stickers. And there's also the hope that these stickers will be made available within the township facilities as well. So it's proposed that this campaign will commence this month, starting in June, because it does coordinate with Pride Month, but it will also continue until all of the stickers have been distributed. Participants are encouraged to display these stickers throughout the year. It's not just, you know, something to do in June, but it's for the duration of the year. So just a final thought, the AI grant does have sufficient remaining funds to support this initiative. As it stands right now, there will be about four thousand, just over four thousand dollars left after the allocation of the Woolwich Pride Event. So with that, there is that memo. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions for Councilor Cudow? Mayor Shance?
Yeah, no questions. Just a big thank you to the committee for the event on Saturday. It was a great, very well attended and, and well-run and wonderful family event for, for everyone who attended. Do you have an estimate of the number of people?
That is a good question. I wish that I could give you, you know, a solid number, but it was in the hundreds. It was definitely in the hundreds, if not well beyond that. So just a, a good showing of community support. And I echo your comments. It was nice to see that. I was, you know, happy to take a part in a lot of festivities there. It was a lot of fun down at Gibson Park. So thanks for that.
Mayor Shance.
I, I would move support for the, the grant.
Okay. So any discussion or would, just looking for a seconder at this point? There, Councilor Schmidt, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is passed. Thank you.
Chair Grant.
Yes.
Point of order question. I want to do this afterwards. Why wasn't this just an automatic approval? I'm just curious why it came before council. That's how we discussions. This is education, I guess, for us.
Um, through you, Madam Chair, we have, or sorry, council approved the EDI grant line. We don't have parameters around that yet. So in, in advance of bringing those
We don't have parameters around that yet, so in in advance of bringing those to uh council for approval, um, we're just bringing any specific requests that come from that grant line directly to council.
Any, any further questions?
I'd make a motion, staff should be able to prove up to the budget amount.
There's a motion, is there a discussion?
Yeah, to that point, I think that um because recommendations are coming from the working group uh for it to go forward to staff um might not be the best way to go about it. You know, if it comes in front of council coming from that committee, that might be the rationale. Uh, I'm kind of looking over in uh Director Smith's uh direction, maybe he can dovetail off of that.
So um through you, Chair Grant, I think I I think Counselor Cudows is correct. You know, it's it is a uh committee, sorry, a working group of of council asking uh for the funds. But I think the biggest thing is that um we're drafting policy, uh which we would bring to council before we to start giving out grants to make sure we know what types of grants council wants us to be giving out uh for these initiatives. So that would be my recommendation, that council approves policy um to to say how the grants are given out. And then if if the delegation to staff is that that staff give out the grants, then we would be able to do that uh after our policy is approved.
Oh, I'll ask it then. Um, where are we in the development of said policy?
Uh, I know the policy has been drafted. I think we're hoping to have it to you by August.
Any further discussion on that? We're okay. Uh, so we next have uh Mr. Smith again to provide counsel with an overview of his second memo, the ending COVID nineteen measures for council boards and committees.
Well, thank you, Chair Grant. Um, so I think uh I think council requested this. And you know, right now, um, staff think that the risk of COVID nineteen has fallen, and we believe it's safe to remove the remaining COVID nineteen restrictions for council boards and committees, starting in August twenty twenty three. Uh, the recommendation would here would be as set out in the memo, but that council meetings continue to be live streamed, that in person, in person attendance would be optional. Uh, public gallery limits are removed and uh brought brought back to the fire code limiting capacity. Registration would be continue, uh would still be required for attendance by Zoom, um, but registration would no longer be required for in-person meetings. Um, optional mass enhanced sanitizer would be provided, but all PPE would be optional based on the user. And staff would continue to monitor to determine if there's any uh safety measure that need to be resumed. Um, but hopefully we wouldn't have to get to that point. Um, so with that, I um don't need uh necessarily recommendation, just looking for feedback. Otherwise, uh, we will implement those changes for August.
Counselor, are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Counselor Cudow?
Thank you, through you. Um, registration required for attendance on Zoom. Can you just provide some context and clarity as to why?
Oh, yeah, through you, Madam Chair. We uh since the start of the pandemic, we required anyone to register uh to to be on the Zoom meeting. Um, part of that was, you know, back when we were concerned about Zoom bombing. Um, and we don't uh publish our um meeting IDs or passwords on our on our website or on our agendas. So that would just be a way to make sure we know who's who's coming online. Um, and then making sure that we know, we know who's there. It also helps us, you know, if if people are uh registering to speak and and want to uh want to be able to comment on something that we know um to prompt uh prompt them to come up and and have their turn to speak.
Any other questions? Mayor Shans?
Yeah, go ahead.
Counselor Schwinn?
Just to clarify, committee as a whole would be a council meeting.
Seeing no further discussions, I'm getting the sense the general consensus is approving.
I was kind of hoping that I could motion this so I could do it dancing, um, but since we don't have to, I'm happy just.
Oh, please dance. I think I think that's our our general consensus there.
Thank you. Uh, so through so through you, Madam Chair, um, what you'll see is some updates on our website and in the media and things like that. And then um, you know, come August, uh you'll probably see some people uh just in the gallery, maybe just to watch your meetings for the first time in a in a while.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have the manager of planning, Jeremy Vink, with us to provide counsel with an overview of his report. We also have Josh DeBoer, the consultant from Paradigm Transportation Solutions Limited in the meeting tonight, who will be giving a presentation after Mr. Vink.
Good morning, uh good evening, counsel. Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Chair Grant. Um, so this is the active transportation master plan that is wrapped up that we've been working on. Uh, this started back in November twenty twenty two, where we awarded this to program to uh Paradigm Transportation to go through the process. Uh, at the time, we had also acquired some funding from the federal government and the two hundred fifty thousand dollars that paid for the majority of this project. So uh active transportation is using human powered mobility, so walking, cycling, rolling, uh anything along those lines. And it has many benefits, and obviously if people are doing that, they're healthier, uh they spend less on transportation costs. And you spend less on gas and parking is also kind of levels out the playing field because young or old and anywhere in between, anybody can pretty much do any of those to get around. So you don't need a car if you have lots of opportunities for active transportation. So uh you're not restricted because you don't have a driver's license, for example. Uh, it also creates a better view, better community, livable community, uh like I mentioned already, reduces uh vehicle related air pollution, which is always a concern when we're talking carbon issues. And it just reduces congestion on the roads if more people are utilizing active transportation. So uh it also ties back into the fifteen minute community, which you were hearing from the region and the regional official plan that now is in place with us to just tie that back. If we add this act of transportation, it makes it a little easier for fifteen minute communities to function. So why do we do active transportation beyond all those benefits? Um, in conjunction with the provincial policy statement, A Place to Grow, they do ask us to review active transportation opportunities in our communities. And as such, we will be looking to implement any of the policies as we can into our new official plan. So the goal is here is to take some of the information that comes out of this document and to feed it into our new official plan that we're working on for twenty twenty four. And then we would be consistent with the provincial policy statement and the place to grow, as well as the regional official plan, aligning them all together. I'm not going to go into detail in the report, uh but everything, I'm gonna let Josh do that in a moment. We did go through a bit, a process uh reviewing uh public consultation, looking at opportunities, gaps and solutions, and Josh will go through all that. What I think is probably going to be the highlight of council is the end cost, which you saw on the report. Is that big number of just over forty four million dollars if we wanted to implement everything in the next ten years? And obviously, we all understand that that money doesn't exist in Woolwich, just on uh that time period. So the the reality here is to show you, this is what we could be trying, should be trying to achieve. Um, how do we achieve that now? Uh, realistically, what we're saying is that we would take the policies, put them into our official plan that would be guiding for us. And then we take a look at that project by project as we move forward. And when we're redoing roads or reconstructions and determine how we can include active transportation to slowly increase our network at a reasonable cost, as doing part of a road reconstruction, for example. So that's the goal, that's what we'd suggest as staff. Uh, also, there's opportunities out there now, especially with the federal and provincial government. They're giving out grants or funding opportunities, so if we maximize those, we can maximize our opportunities with some uh active transportation solutions that we could look to. And it does make it a challenge, obviously, Woolwich, when we have such a large community that we're spread apart with large rural areas to kind of interconnect everything. So it makes it more of a challenge in the city or an urban area, obviously. So um, that was just to wanted to highlight the cost issue and just how we might go forward without spending forty four million in the next five years. Um, before you have the recommendation also is to endorse the active transportation master plan in principle, direct staff to implement funding uh as we can in the development charges update. Uh, also to direct staff to implement uh the associated recommendations is through the official plan, any future road projects uh consider as consideration, as well as the five-year capital forecast review. And like I mentioned, if we do those, council can look at each project one-on-one and assess the impacts and the value and determine about implementing active transportation. Uh, that's all I really want to get into tonight. I'm gonna let Josh DeBoer from Paradigm, who has been leading things for us on that end, to go through the report and answer any detailed questions you have for him basically around that. And uh that will give you a better overview of everything that's in the plan itself.
Thank you, Jeremy. Um, Honorable Mayor, uh Honorable Counsel. Uh, as Jeremy said, my name is Josh DeBoer. I'm a senior project manager and associate with Paradigm Transportation. Uh, we're a transportation consulting firm. Um, and we work together with Laura Consulting, uh our subconsultant for uh uh communications to prepare the twenty twenty three uh township people with active transportation master plan. Um, I've prepared a few slides here, if um I can share my screen. And um we'll go through the key points of our of my uh of our plan. Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Not, not yet, no.
Okay, try again. Oh, I forgot to click share, so. Can you see now?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, so Jeremy mentioned some of the aspects already. Um, but I'll go through them uh through these sites, so everyone is familiar. Um. So uh as I'm sure we're all aware, the township is it's already a vibrant, responsible, uh healthy and progressive community that continues to grow. And uh with this growth, um, becomes the need for uh to accommodate other modes of transportation, uh notably active transportation. So as Jeremy mentioned, um, there's a number of benefits associated with active transportation in terms of uh reducing automobile automobile dependence, uh carbon emissions, uh increases physical activity, um reduces infrastructure demands and uh creates more livable and equitable communities, uh among other aspects. And um, as Jeremy mentioned as well, uh uh and when we speak about active transportation, we're speaking about uh human powered mode of travel. Um, so we prepared the active transportation master plan, and this is the high level assessment of uh active transportation facility needs along the public right away. Um, this builds upon uh existing township, regional and provincial plans and policies to uh develop the plan, and then it in turn feeds into um upcoming plans, uh notably for the township, uh the official plan and Parks and Recreation Plan. And uh really, the intention of this is to uh provide access and mobility for all members of the community, um regardless of of ability or income or age um to allow to allow that access. Um, so in terms of the plan, the first thing we we did was look at the existing conditions. Um, I think uh we're we're all familiar here with the township and its existing uh road network. Um. Uh, there's points here about uh there's there's growth in Breslaw, but not some of the other communities as much. So we looked at all those aspects, uh community gathering points uh to see what's needed and and what was a priority. Um, and you can see through the map here. Um, this is the existing active transportation network, so it's mainly comprised of uh the township's trail system, uh sidewalks and regional facilities. So there is um definitely a a good road network in place and also some active transportation facilities to uh that are already there. Um, once we had the base understanding of the network, we uh carried out our stakeholder engagement. And this ran through the entire duration of the project, so roughly about six months. And uh the purpose of that was to increase understanding awareness of active transportation uh in in the communities um, as well as identifying current and future issues that may come up. Um, and I think maybe most importantly is to capture a range of perspectives from the community, from from all different uh people uh of what's needed and what are issues and what are opportunities. Um, so there was three rounds of engagement uh throughout this year. Um, and they were both virtual and in person, um, so that would allow for people more familiar with computers um and online engagement, but also allowed for for in-person dialogue as well. Uh, and basically what we heard from these events is that um a lot of the community is is uh happy with active transportation and um they're happy with the uh networks that are being proposed. Um. They uh feel safe using uh the trail system and and some of the existing facilities already. Um, I think some of the desires were to um increase those linkages within the community and to other communities outside of Woolwich. Um, in terms of sidewalks or shoulders, um, but not doing so at the sacrifice of of traffic congestion or um significant financial uh constraints. Um, and we also have feedback from the industry, so this pie chart isn't from the township itself, but it's outside uh broader from the industry. And what you'll notice, I'll point out here, is the uh the blue chunk of the pie, which shows a lot of people interested in active transportation, um, but they have some reservations in terms of uh the linkages or safety or comfort. Um, so what we really got from this is uh what was driving our study, um, were these five factors here. Accessibility and equity, uh connectivity, uh safety and comfort, costs and physical barriers. Um, so this led us to our network development stage. We followed the standard process as detailed in the Ontario Traffic Manual, Book eighteen. And this is a step-by-step process that's iterative, based on feedback and results um to uh obtain a a practical and effective network. And we also followed guidance from the township and policy as well, um, and other industry standards. Um, and we also reviewed a number of uh active transportation plans similar to those of of Woolwich um to gauge uh opportunities and and challenges. Um, so here is the planned sidewalk network. Um, if anyone has obviously trouble seeing some of these details, it's in the report itself. Um, it should be posted online as well at at some point. Um, and this follows the township's policy of providing sidewalks on uh both sides of the road uh within the settlement areas. Um, and then this next map is showing uh the planned cycling network. So this includes uh regional facilities, but in terms of township facilities, uh the main facility types are uh urban, are uh shoulders, uh sign routes and and multi-use paths. Um, and these two networks, sidewalks and and cycling, allow for other modes of of travel as well. And um where there are identified uh concerns uh about certain modes, those can be addressed in in the detailed stage uh in the design. Um, and then the last map here is the implementation. Um, what we narrowed it on this was providing a primary route for all uh between all communities. And that can be shown in the blue here, and then secondary routes in in the yellow. Um, Jeremy uh mentioned this uh previously, but there is a cost associated with uh creating this network. Um, we developed costs based on unit prices for the components of each facility. Um, and that did exclude certain aspects, such as land acquisition or utility relocation. Um, and it's only for the uh township roads. Um, as Jeremy said, most uh most of what I you see in in all of these plans is that it's integrated into existing capital uh works programs. And um, let's say when you're rebuilding a road, um, and this is identified in the plan, uh there's consideration to provide, let's say, wider shoulders to allow for um that access to active transportation. And um, there is opportunity as well at this point to hear on the next slide of uh potential funding sources outside. potential funding sources outside of just property taxes. So there are a number listed here that can be pursued and those are detailed in the report as well. And just a few more slides here, there were there were some some feedback on design guidance. These are the main facility types that we're we're detailing in the plan. And there's also there were discussions about surface type, so concrete being more conducive to pedestrians, walking, asphalt more to rolling modes such as cycling. And and Woolwich does have a number of existing stone dust trails which can be considered as well in terms of of horses and and other modes. And really, once you get into the detail of the specific road segment, surface treatment is is one of the key items to consider. And there are a number of resources to support design as I've noted here. And just in terms of maintenance monitoring, it is important, once this plan is starting to be implemented to maintain what is there. So in terms of winter maintenance, which routes are maintained through the winter or what what's closed off and for example, how those are going to be clouded. And data collection is another important aspect of knowing when to what routes have the most users or or not and how effective certain facilities are once they're implemented. In in most, the last point here, in terms of updating the plan itself, most municipalities seek to to update the plan every five years. And this accounts for changes in the industry or the municipality itself that can be shown in the plan. So thank you for your time and that I'm open to any questions, comments on the plan itself.
Thank you for for your presentation, council. Are there any questions for Mr. Vink or Mr. DeBoer? Mayor Shans?
Thank you. Two two questions, very different questions. You said it's sort of people powered vehicles. How do e-bikes and e-scooters fit into the plan?
Through your chair, e-bikes and e-scooters can use the same facilities. One of the key issues that comes through through that are the speeds of some of these newer technologies. And it's important to to work with the providers to either geo fence some of these e-scooters or prohibit them on certain facilities where they are considered more dangerous. Mainly the e-scooters.
And how are people doing that? Is it just by signage or I I know it's fairly new, so
Yeah, yeah.
Have the answers yet, but I'm just curious because I I I saw a situation that could have been very dangerous.
Yeah.
In one of the cities.
Exactly. And this has been kind of coming up in the industry the last few years. The city of Toronto is a year or two years ago passed the council report prohibiting e-scooters on certain facilities and under certain conditions. Essentially only permitting them under certain certain rules. And the region of Durham also recently had a council report. I think that that permitted them a little bit more. If I understand that correctly. But definitely a proactive approach I would recommend to to some of these newer modes. I think Montreal had it had a bad example where they were kind of just left to to go on the roads by themselves. And and now I think more of a restrictive policy is coming in there.
And thank you. My second question is around your cost estimates. And just wondering if those estimates are standalone or is that if we integrate it into our roadwork?
Through your chair, that's a great, that's a great question. They're based on unit costs of the specifics facility components. So this wouldn't include other aspects of the road or related aspects such as land acquisition or or utility relocation. So if they were to be integrated into existing projects, there's likely some synergies there. But we tried our best to isolate just the cost of the AT facilities themselves.
Thank you.
There any other questions, councillor Kudou?
Thank you, Chair, through you. I don't know if this would be to Mr. DeBoer or to Mr. Vink. But when I'm looking at some of these costs, is there a way that we could differentiate between some of these active transportations that would be available within town limits versus some that are on more rural roads? I'm just thinking people in town are probably going to use these routes a little bit more frequently. You know, if we had a place to start, I think that generally speaking, people would want this infrastructure within the town that they live in, not necessarily on the highways linking towns together. So is there a way that we could potentially start with the infrastructure, say in Breslau or St. Jacobs or Almyra and build out from there?
Through through your chair, that that's an excellent question. Point you probably to to items here. One, the report does contain a few higher priority segments that can be considered more in the near term. And those aren't necessarily contained to urban areas. I believe most of those are. There's five of them. So that could be a good start. And I believe one of them, Jeremy may be able to speak to this, but except for reconstruction next year. And the other aspect is in in terms of the urban rural matter, the rural areas are are planned for shoulders. So basically widening of the road to give give space to those who need it. It was in the urban areas, it's more signed routes. And a few multi use paths. So the multi use paths are are a lot more intense. There's potentially trees or utilities in the in the way. But sign routes and pay the pavement markings that are that go along with those, those can be more of a quick win as well in the urban areas.
Thank you, councillor Schwint.
Through you, I'm sure to Mr. Vink, I think. You talked about the sticker shock and the cost earlier and I'm a little bit confused on how this report will be used in that. I read the recommendation, we'd be, I guess, adopting that this would be our goal forward plan. And I thought I heard you say that this would be the basis of when new projects happen, we consider is it appropriate or not? And to me, that's a huge difference. And one, I guess, some clarity on, is it something we look at and if it makes sense in this particular reconstruction project and we can afford it and it's a high priority, yep, we include it. Or is it, this is our plan and we're going to do it and the DC charges are going to come and it's kind of the planning gospel. I'm wondering how we implement this.
Through councillor Chair Grant to councillor Schwint, excellent question. It will be a bit of a direction of how council wants to take it to some extent. The way the recommendation is, is you would direct staff to start implementing it and we would bring it forward as things come forward in terms of road reconstructions. We would use this as the Bible to say, here is what's proposed and what we should be doing. Council, when you're reviewing each year, the costs of projects that are going on and maybe prioritizing funds, you may determine that you might cut certain projects and or portions of a project. So that's something you're going to have to wrestle with each and every year, but realizing that the goal is is to try and achieve an active transportation network. So it's not an easy answer because each year council is going to have to review individualized projects with that understanding that you cut it, you're making it harder to achieve that end goal. But you might prioritize some projects over others and maintain them. So our goal is to bring it forward to you as staff each time to make sure you're aware, where are the costs, where are the implications? And then to for council to make an informed decision about how that road project goes forward or how that project moves forward with or without active transportation in the end because of just the 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 costs that are incurred. So it is the guide just to help guide us to say what we should be looking for and where. And that will give us a guide when we pull these road projects when they move forward to say this is what we should be looking for in this road and to make you informed of that.
Any other questions? I had one for myself for Mr. Vink. You mentioned fifteen minute cities and I know there's a lot of misconception around that term. And I was wondering if you could maybe take a brief moment to kind of clarify that term for us and what it actually means and maybe clear up some of those misconceptions others might have.
Yes, good question, Chair. So a lot of misconceptions and confusion around the fifteen minute community and what it means. It's tied back to the wording of complete communities. And all it basically means is how can you create a community that you can get to the main essentials within fifteen minutes? You could say it's fifteen minutes with a car, fifteen minutes walking or fifteen minutes cycling, for example. The goal would be to have it within fifteen minutes of us of more of the active transportation, walking and cycling preferred. So that somebody could live in their community but walk easily to get the grocery store, get to a convenience store, get their pharmacy, everything they want need for day to day should be within about fifteen minutes of them. And there's just the goal to try and achieve to make a better community that you can walk around and be more active in. And without having to rely on your vehicle all the time to drive everywhere. It it doesn't mean everything and obviously in something like Woolwich is going to be within fifteen minutes because obviously a hospital is not within fifteen minutes, for example, of of walking in Almyra, you would never, you can't do that. Not all our communities will achieve that, but it is a goal for some of our bigger communities to essentially mean you can get from your home to some to the basics and not have to rely on a vehicle or drive leaving your town to get to it. So that's the goal of the fifteen minute community, basically. Everything's within a close proximity to you, work, home and your essentials.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councillor Kudou?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, through you. I really appreciate that this report had so many potential avenues for funding. So I suppose what I would want staff to take back is how they could take this plan and start to apply to some of those avenues for funding. And maybe, you know, we could get some of this infrastructure built without having to levy the taxpayers.
Okay, I think that was just more of a direction at this point. Is there any other questions? All right, there is a recommendation, this report. Is there anyone who would be willing to move the recommendation? Councillor Schwint?
There is some discussion as a council on this one. This is this is a biggie for me because of dollars involved and it's a long, long term plan. I think active transportation is a great goal and something we should promote. That's not a plan that I believe we can afford to implement today as like the planning Bible. And then as council have to say no every time the project comes up because we just can't afford it. My preference would be that we accept this plan and direct staff that as planning reconstruction projects happen, the plan is reviewed and if there's points that make sense, we incorporate it in these projects. Were appropriate, but it's not the default that has to happen. That just puts the pressure on us as council every time we have to either say no or increase our tax rate. And that's not good planning in my mind. So I'm glad we have a plan. I think it's a review document, but I can't support these recommendations.
So any other discussion? Councillor Bryant?
Thank you, through you. I I agree with what councillor Swint has just said. We don't have the funding to carry this through and I think it needs much more discussion and a way to a way to find a way to move forward with it without burdening the taxpayers.
Councillor Kudou, then Mayor Shans?
Thanks. I I would just reiterate the point that if we accept this report, I don't think that we have to move forward and implement it. I think that we can review it when we move forward with other projects, but by accepting this report, it gives us that plan that we can go to the provincial and the federal government and start to tap whoever shoulder that we can for some of that grant money saying, listen, we have this plan. This is our long term vision. This is what we're actively working towards. That's kind of how I envision this plan being implemented, not necessarily by levying the taxpayers every time we want to add to the network.
Mayor Shans?
I would would agree the way it's worded that it it so so item number three, for example, says that the projects would be considered as part of the annual budget review and the five year capital forecast. So I I think this is just feeding into our our planning process. And I don't think it means that we have to go ahead with anything that's in here. If we if we get to that point, maybe I'm maybe I'm not reading it correctly. The other piece in here is also allowing it to be calculated into development charges so that development is paying for for part of this. So I I as far as I read it, I think I think I'm okay with that the way it is.
Councillor Schwint?
So I think that's important to me because I'm reading it differently and most importantly, we need staff to know what we need as a council when we make a recommendation. Because I guess I did hear Mr. Vink say that this would be required in any new projects, we follow this plan. And it's up to council to take it out in the future. And but I can't support that. That puts us in an awkward position every time there's a project. I heard councillor Kudou's comments about if there's funding available, let's use it. Hundred percent on board with that. And where this project will make sense and we refer to the plan, here's, it all fits in. I think we should be endorsing that, but committing ourselves to doing it. I I can't support the DC charges. I think we have to have a serious conversation because it is appropriate to have DC charges and pay for this. We have to make sure we're on board with doing all of it, some of it or none of it. And I don't think we're have a thorough understanding of what we want yet.
Any other discussion? Mr. Vink?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me speak for a moment. The intent was the way the mayor was understanding it. I can understand the concerns. It is a big picture number coming at us in terms of the community and council. The goal here is is yes, with the funding, if we approve the plan, we have a model then or an understanding of going out to get funding where we can. So we have a plan because that's the key to getting any funding is you have to have a plan. So somebody understands what we're looking for, so we can fall back to that to get that funding sources. Which is what councillor Kudou has already noted. But yes, that's key point in number three is to be considered as part of the capital budget each year as well as the five year capital forecast. So we will, it's meant for council to be able to consider them, the the guide is there, the the document is the guide to say on this road, we should be looking for this and contemplating it. And then council, based on what we're looking at through staff like we do every year, when Jared's group comes forth with infrastructure projects, you'll review costs and the implications and determine what projects move forward or what parts of projects don't move forward. That happens every year as you go through some of these bigger road projects. So that was the intent that we would just, you know, would be, it would come up in that design to say we'd suggest that. And council would, you know, determine whether that made the best sense as we move forward. But without the guide, we wouldn't know what to recommend to council, when to bring forward any of these opportunities or what to bring forward if we were looking at a road reconstruction. So we do need the plan to kind of give us that guidance. And that's what it is. It's a guidance for us. It's not Bible is not quite the right term. It's a guide. So that was how staff will be taking it. And I hope that kind of explains everything. Like I said, it's not going to be easy, but it is a guide for moving forward.
Mayor Shans?
Thank you. Jeremy, some of this is also showing sidewalks, correct?
Yes, it is. A part of the program is showing the sidewalks, which is part of our new subdivisions as standard. We would have the Uh, yes, it is. A part of the program is showing the sidewalks, which is part of our new subdivisions as standard. Uh, we would have the developer install. And typically on a road reconstruction, uh, we would ask for sidewalks on both sides all the time. And then it's up to council, for example, if they wish to change that for on a project for some reason or another too. So our standard is to bring forward sidewalks on both sides.
So I I guess my question would be how. Wha- what in this, excuse me, what in this recommendation is uh. New that we're not doing now? Like, can you, can you quantify that in? For us in any way is is um seventy percent of it would have been done anyway as sidewalks or like. Can you give us some kind of a uh idea?
Who you count uh chair grant to the mayor. I I can't say I could quite quantify it that way, but sidewalks, you know, definitely would be something we do regularly. And regardless, it's anything that if we're going to paint bike lanes anywhere that needed to be done. So that would be your higher priority streets where there's a lot of traffic, for example. So um a first street, for example, where there's a higher traffic amount, I think the report speaks to it. There are some priority streets where. Because of the amount of traffic on the local road, we should be doing some elements there uh that to make cycling safer. Versus your regular local road on the subdivision, you're probably not going to need to do anything because it is low enough traffic. People can share the street. You know, people can bike on it or uh or the sidewalks are there. So. On the average street, probably nothing is going to happen on your local side street. It's your bigger streets uh that we're going to see some road paving, uh maybe line painting, color painting, you know, the greens nowadays. And the uh I think as Josh mentioned is in the rural areas, there's a big component there about doing the sidewalk, doing the side uh. Portions. So creating something along the side of the road, which is not cheap to do on a rural road to install some active transportation. Lane on the side of a gravel road. So. Those are ones that are probably going to drop off the table over time because of the costs and just how we would, how we accomplish doing that, I think. So. But we can definitely focus on the urban areas and those key areas providing. The sidewalks, uh maybe some multi-use trails in some locations where that makes sense versus the sidewalk, which would be more of an asphalt trail. And that's wider. Uh, multi-use trails are about three meters wide versus a sidewalk at one point eight. Uh, something we're already going to be doing, for example, in Barnes-Swellwood Drive with the Activa subdivision, we're going to look for that multi-use trail. So. Some of this is just going to be eaten up in new developments and you'll see it happen. So and I see a lot of that. Just part of what's just going to be regular to our way of functioning to some extent in the future.
Uh, Mayor Shance and then Counselor Schwan.
I think we're getting hung up is the the big numbers in the cost that are showing up in the report. Versus uh what is actually an additional cost that may be incurred in a capital. Project. So I I wonder if you can uh he- help put that in perspective a little more.
I can try, but Jared's going to know how to do that better than I can. So he already popped on there thankfully. So. Definitely it will be a matter of we're going to look at a road and if it's going to cost a million dollars, what does it take to put a bit of extra? You know, sidewalk or an extra lane width, what does that mean in terms of extra costs? And he can quantify that. When you're doing the road reconstruction as part of your long-term forecast, you know what you're looking at. So you can start to look at those numbers better. And just understand what some of those implications might be, but it will probably be a small percentage of some of the jobs, to be honest.
Good. And do you uh chair grant to Mayor Shance and council? Um, I think uh just to reiterate some of what Jeremy had said is. We need a plan so that we can advocate for funding. That's a big piece. So I think uh the region has a plan. Uh, with their active transportation, they have cycling routes on their rural uh road network in the township of Woolwich. And I would just go back to a a project we did on Benjamin Road. Uh, we had a cycling community come and attend council and we're looking for cycling lanes there. Staff at the time went through some iterative processes to look at the costs. And and that was a narrow road and unfortunately, a lot of our rural roadways are uh forty feet or twelve point two meters wide. It's not very conducive. Uh, to active transportation, but it now will be uh something that we assess when we're doing a paving program. We're looking at. Do we have sufficient width, much like we did our tree side uh roadside planting? Do we have sufficient width there to install cycling? That would then be part of a council recommendation uh to to suggest council. If we were to do cycling facilities here. It provides connectivity, it would come at X cost. And very much like Benjamin Road, we had a few scenarios. And council was ultimately the deciding factor on 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 how we dealt with the cycling and we just came up with some numbers. So it's going to just be part of the design process now. Much like AODA is for Accessibility with Disabilities Act, we look at sidewalk both sides. It's not a requirement to install sidewalk both sides. Um, you know, you don't have to install it at any cost. But it is an assessment that we always go uh go through and ultimately council makes the decision. Uh, I know uh uh Mayor Shance, you've been here for some of those contentious discussions about sidewalk. But very much like that process, it'll now just be something that at staff level, we assess on every project we're looking to do. Is this an opportunity? If so, uh, we would provide options for council uh to weigh in, uh, because obviously there would be cost impacts. And not only the installation cost, I think it's important to point out as well that we also have to accept the long-term maintenance costs. So for a developer or a subdivision to install uh cycling facilities or multi-use trails. That comes at an operating cost as well and and maintenance cost down the road. So something that staff are cognizant of. And probably why we haven't done a lot of that on our own now. Um, but I think it starts with a plan. And that's really what we're asking council to endorse is the plan so we can do that assessment and hopefully leverage some funding opportunities in the future.
Yeah, just went.
So I think that just reinforced my mind that this recommendation goes too far. That becomes the default position and. Council's part of position, we're always having to pull things back or we're out of money. Um. My recommendation would be instead of endorsing the plan in principle, we're accepting the report as a document. That we refer to. And for number three, instead of implementing the plan, we direct staff to consider the plan and recommendations. When planning any future projects. And assess how appropriate it is in each situation. Otherwise, staff are in a position where they have to include it in their recommendation, whether or not it makes sense on any given street. Sidewalk or whatever. I think there should be leeway there that professional opinions got come out from staff. Yes. We believe that transportation here, it's worth the money. This one, we'd be great to have, but for these reasons, we don't recommend it, council. Yes, council still the deciding voice at the end, but it really boxes us in a corner. And we're always overriding South and saying, we have no money, we have no money, we're the bad boys. I don't think that's a fair position. We need more reason to process which one goes ahead, which one doesn't.
So there's a amending, a men- yeah, so there's a request to amend the current res- um recommendations. Is there any discussion, Counselor Kudel?
Yeah, I think my fear with that is if we accept this, um. It may just sit on the shelf, right? What's what's to push people to pull it off and?
Counselor Swin.
So I'll be number three, reject staff to consider this when making their. Um, planning for any new projects. We looked at it. Yeah, it makes sense. No, it doesn't make sense.
And perhaps Mr. Vink could speak on this because maybe the the big issue is just the way that the current recommendation is worded that. Is is maybe causing some of that issue. So um Eric's suggestion of amending that wording might. Be more in line with what you were suggesting, which I think was to treat this more like a guideline.
Uh, yes, Chief Madam Chair, um, it definitely is at the will of council how they wish to kind of word it. Um. Staff will take it, you know, forward in that sense and I, you know, um. If you want to change, like as Counselor Swin's proposing, if you want to change the wording up a little just to clarify. That element, I think it's fine. I think the same, the general thrust is coming forward here. Um, I just. I I would still suggest that we endorse the is in principle and and condition A. But yes, might be modifying C a little bit to give that flat that interpretation to understand the staff review and provide a con. And uh provide that information to council. It's fine. I think it's still your your endorse, you're endorsing in the principle of the plan to look at active transportation in the broad sense. So. I think we need to still accept it, not just for reference purposes, but.
Is there any other discussion?
I was gonna second, yeah, I know, I was gonna second Counselor Shwin's motion.
Mayor Shance. Just to be clear on the wording of the motion, are we just changing implement to consider?
Next up, consider the plan recommendations as part of any. Sorry, I'm reading this as I think. Considered implement as part of any future road project planning. Yeah, because I don't want to go too far down the road, but it's a given. My concern and I am. Still on number one, I don't believe we we're endorsing it yet. We want this as a review document that we benchmark against. But we may or may not be able to meet those principles and suggestions in every case.
Counselor Bryant.
Um, just to comment, when we do the budget, is there any way of putting in? When they put in, say, a road project, tell us that there is a cost of X number of dollars to put sidewalks on both sides of the road. So we know what those. Additional costs would be to implement this plan because right now when we see the budget, we just see the road. We don't see. If there's sidewalks relating to the master, the master plan or or what it is. It's very difficult. To do a budget when you don't have all those breakdowns. If it, you know what I'm saying, it's. If it's broken down, it's easier to understand, but right now. We don't have that full understanding. So I do agree with what Eric is saying. It's very difficult to to plan when you don't have the the known factors in front of you.
Counselor Schwan.
I can ask a question of staff again, Mr. Vink. We asked for the consideration instead of implementation. Um, does that give direction to staff that, hey, we want to? Want staff to use their professional judgment? Or is it? Put in a position where you don't want to make those calls?
Uh, through council, through the chair, um. Adding that wording into C doesn't change substantially from my end. It, you know, it still gives us that same understanding from my end. So I think it clears it up from your end, which is fine, which is good. Um. To consider to implement. So we consider that as we go through and then give that information as we move through a project. Now. I'm not sure whether infrastructure is going to break it down every time or if they can or not. That's a question they'll have to a- address. Just realize that. Sidewalks on both sides of the street is standard, so that's not special. That's a standard. That's in the official plan already. That already exists as a policy, right? Um, but if we're doing anything else that we're, let's say, adding bike lane widths or uh. That kind of elements, I'm sure they could break down those costs approximately to tell you what those costs would be. And identify that to council as they go through a specific project, but uh. Definitely, I don't have a problem in terms of the amendments to see if that's what you want to do is to put in for consideration there. Um. Yeah.
Counselor Kudel.
Yeah, I'm gonna chime in just because I seconded the motion. So just so I'm clear on what I'm seconding, we're we're. Changing the recommendation, all three of those points. One word in each one of those points. So number one is going to read rather than endorse, except that's the one change. Number two is going to read rather than implement, consider. And the same can be said for number three, direct staff to consider the plan, not implement. Is that correct?
All right.
So my original motion, I agree on points two and three. Um. Accepting the plan in principle and no, I'm not prepared to go that far. There's accept the plan for. Planning.
I think um we're not endorsing it, sorry.
I I was gonna say, I think Director Smith may have uh some clarification on what in principle maybe mean.
Uh, if it helps, the way I would read um endorse a a plan in principle, i- is the way you're already thinking of it. Uh, as I hear the discussion. I would consider maybe I I think council would have issue with if the recommendation read. Adopt the the plan without adding the word in principle. I think that's the stronger language. But I think you are looking at endorsing the plan in principle. Um, the way I'm hearing council discuss. Um, I think the other changes I've got and uh and we can uh, we can. Have that resolution for you unless I'm misunderstanding council.
I'm gonna let uh Mr. Brennerman, who's been very patient, as I've ignored him completely to call. Um, I have a chance to speak.
Yeah, so um. I was gonna try this on uh with council. Cause I, can I, because I understand uh what the the discussion is trying to get at. Um. And you know, certainly Jeremy uh or Jared, if they have any concerns can can jump in, but. If I'm listening to council, I would change the wording up this way. Um, that you support in principle the act of transportation master plan, subject to. Two and three, what I mean by that is subject to staff coming back. Or subject to staff being directed to come back with an implement uh. Implementing funding through the development charges. So you can see what that's like. And subject to staff um looking at what this realistically looks like. In terms of recommendations, because you'll have another shot through the official plan. And then also the development of the five-year capital forecast. So, you know, further to what Clerk Smith was trying to get at. You know, I think you are trying to say you're only accepting this in principle. To subject to certain conditions. So I mean, that's the wording I would throw that um. That one would change to uh that um that you support in principle the act of transportation master plan. I'm a subject to. Staff coming back uh with an implementation plan as per the development charges update. And subject to three, staff coming back with an implementation fan- plan. As to what this looks like in terms of the official plan review and the development of a five-year capital forecast.
Counselor Schwan.
Uh, I understand where you're trying to go with that one. It's too far for me to be comfortable with and that. We're still saying this is what we want to do, find a way to get it done. And I'm saying. We'd like to go in this direction, but. We may not be able to afford it, it may not make sense in this area or this area, and we have to make judgment calls all the way along. So I. I'm still back to only accepting the plan as a goal and. Considering it when doing all these planning things and the DC charges. Um, because I think in your wording, the plan would be in place for the DC charges. And maybe in this subdivision here, it doesn't make sense to have a bike lane for whatever reason. But it does make sense over here and we have to have that flexibility. At the planning stage to pull it out instead of being pushed too hard.
Mr. Brennerman.
Yes, so through you to Counselor Shwin, I would submit to you that accepting is very strong language. And I would sub- submit to you that what I was trying to explain was that. If you included language to say that you accept. Or sorry, you support in principle, subject to. You still have to, as council, approve the development charges update. You still have to approve the official plan and you still have to approve the capital forecast. So that's where I was trying to help you with the fact that. I understand your concern. I wasn't trying to come up with wording that said this is a fait accompli. I was trying to come up with wording that says. You you support in principle, subject to. Because we have to come back and again, this might be part of the nuances of new council. We, you have to approve the development charges update. We have to come back and you have to be okay with it. We have to come back still with the official plan review outcome. We have to come back with the capital budget forecast. So implementation is still in your hands. Anyways, I I just wanted to explain that nuance because accept is a strong word.
Counselor Shwin.
Yeah, and I'm starting with how the word number one. And I want to move us away from the default position, no matter what is we're going to receive as council. A plan that includes. Must of transportation master plan components in all cases and we have to yank it out. I'm saying that at staff level, start thinking ahead of time. Doesn't make sense or not, where can we yank it out? And the good news is we're in committee this week, not council, so we've got a whole week to word Smith and Mr. Smith will figure it out. Make it sound smart. But I'm, thanks for the ten-year decision we're making tonight. I want to make sure we're all comfortable with the wording. We're going in the right same direction, I think, Mr. Brennerman, and just want to make sure.
Yeah, and 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 I understand through you. Yeah, and 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 I understand through you, Madam Chair. It it's just what I was trying to come up with was. Basically, you're supporting in principle. But it's conditional approval because staff still have to report back. And what are the implications to the development charges review? What what will be the cost that come out of that? What would this actually look like in tangible terms as part of the official plan? And then ultimately, staff have to incorporate this in the five-year forecast, and council still has to lend their support. For what this realistically looks like and the fiscal implications as part of that. So I was trying to structure something that was. A conditional acceptance of sorts.
Is there any other? Discussion questions? Quandaries?
Point of order, I guess I'm curious, so if we're starting with this night and we know it's committed the whole, can we have the week to? Figure out the proper wording just. Just not doing anything later, is that bad form?
I will defer to.
So I I was going to suggest that at some point uh, through you, Madam Chair, that um, if council's still stuck on language, maybe you can defer it. And defer this uh, motion or and bring, send it back to staff and we'll craft um. You know, crap, maybe with all the discussion that we've had tonight, craft a resolution that that we think council can support.
So I would, I'm gonna venture that Counselor Schwent would be moving a motion of deferral, is there a secondary? Uh, Counselor Bryant, is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? And that looks like that has a pass, so that is deferred. All right, Mr. Vink, don't go anywhere, because we've got you for another report, uh, you're here to provide it, council with an overview of the proposed changes to the aggregate. Aggregate Resource Act to expand self-filling activities and new policies.
So yes, uh, you get to see me again for a little while, um, so the. Uh, province has posted on the environmental registry. The proposed changes to the Aggregate Resources Act to expand the self-filing activities and some new policies and guidelines. Uh, I've attached the information to the report, so you can read it because I can't combine everything easily necessarily. Um, but the basic of the first amendment is to kind of give some guidance. Around licensing and permits and site plans, what constitutes a significant change and what doesn't. Um, generally speaking, there's a lot of lists, they have a big list within that section there that's attached. So surrendering rehabilitated areas or. Surrendering of extracted areas, changes to some slopes or grades, uh, changes to vegetation, trees or cover. Some administrative changes, things along those lines, you know, all these kind of things are saying is. They're they're very minor um, and wouldn't be significant, which means they could do a minor change and be done. And they wouldn't be circulated around and just be something done at the provincial level that they would just kind of stamp the change, basically. Um, one of the things we just wanted to note in that section specifically was. The proposal that they would allow the aggregate operation to increase the maximum annual tonnage. Of up to five percent from the original tonnage, so they could take the. The class whatever they're at and. Go a bit higher up to five percent. And then there is another opportunity for them to temporarily increase the maximum annual tonnage by ten percent, so. They would treat that as potentially as. Not significant, uh, staff do have a bit of concern there of. Just noting that you increase tonnages, it starts to change how much truck traffic you got coming and going to the site. And that may change what people had anticipated or noise that's taking place, so. Um, it could have some impact, so we considered, we suggesting that those not be considered as. Uh, minor or not significant, but they, those types of changes would be considered significant enough to warrant review. And comment that we would be able to comment to them and give. Information to the province before such changes were made. Just with regards to the self-filing section, that's the la- last section, so this is things that. If uh, somebody was coming through, they could do this through self-filing, so. Um, they would meet some criteria, so these are the things that uh, basically they're looking at some site changes for entrances and exits. Adding or removing the location of the above-ground fuel storage. Um, where processing activities are already taking place, the allowing for the importation of recycling materials. And then adding or removing or re- or relocating portable processing equipment or portable asphalt uh, equipment on the site. So. They're just saying with this, somebody could do this on their own and do self-filing, so they would just file this information with the province and that's all they need to do. There are criteria proposed, staff reviewed this criteria that are proposed, um. Generally speaking, the criteria, the same question staff would ask, uh, and we were suggesting that the council or township would ask as we see, if we saw such a. Proposal come forward, so. Nothing here seems out of line with what would be expected from somebody to do if they're following forward with this, so. You know, what are the rules, what are the regulations, do they have everything, are they following the rules? Um, you know, is it gonna get, if it's gonna cause impacts, then they shouldn't be doing it, for example, so. Generally speaking, they, the opportunities seem to make sense here that somebody could go through and say, yeah, I'm fine, I can meet these and I won't. Basically cause a problem, so I'll self-file and just put that information in and provide that just information to the province each year. So that's where staff kind of saw that kind of going was, yes, you know, we had concerns at first, but they do seem to cover off all the key questions. Um, in most cases, it's already, if they're already doing something, they can add something to it, but here's the regulations to go with it. The exception staff are kind of noting it's just the location of entrances and exits. Uh, we had a bit of concern that that was not something that should be someone be should be able to allow to do on their own for self-filing opportunities. True, they would have to come to the municipality and confirm the at lo- new location is okay from a municipal perspective to get a road entrance permit. But road entrance permits are generally, you got your sight lines, is that okay? It's not looking at it from a gravel pit perspective of, if I move the driveway two hundred meters in another direction, did I just move that driveway? Past someone else's house who never had traffic before, for example. So we would say that's a bit of a concern that somebody be able to move a driveway where there potential noise implications that could happen to neighboring properties. So that's not counted for in the proposed filing, uh, it doesn't speak to that, it just would allow them to come forward if the municipality accepts the relocated. Location, so. Uh, staff do have a bit of concern with respects to that one section there. With anything when it comes to self-filing or anything where someone's doing their paperwork or just complying to some standard regulations. Uh, the concern always comes is is we're giving people more power on their own to do things. What happens if something goes wrong, so they, generally speaking, the intent here is that would take less work off onto staff, municipal uh, provincial staff to deal with these items. Because it's all being handled at the low, at the pit level with the applicant dealing with it all themselves. So what happens if things go wrong, um, that's the concern that we would still have that. It's important that the ministry maintains staff to be able to deal with regularly reviewing these gravel pits as well as regularly being able to deal with any. Complaints in a timely fashion, should somebody have tried to do something, and maybe they didn't meet the requirements properly and something needs to be addressed, so. That's always the key thing is giving people some flexibility means we also have to please a little more, so. Uh, along those lines, you have the recommendation in front of you with the. Three proposed recommendations there to submit to the ministry. One, just a concern about the change in the maximum tonnage that shouldn't be permitted. And the concern around the changing of driveways not be considered for self-filing, and then that the ministry uh, just ensures that they have enough. Staff to deal with any issues that come forward, should there be any more issues from people doing their own self-filing. And with that, I have open for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Vink, I'm pretty sure you're gonna have some questions, Counselor Bryant, you have the floor.
Yes, who? I I do have a lot of concerns with what with what we are seeing with self-filing. The one comment I like that you made was it's to reduce the burden on the ministry staff. They currently don't get to pits any more frequently than five years, and that was told to me ten years ago, so we know it's a lot less frequent than that now. And if they're going to be moving their portable crushers. What does that do to the residents that have crushers in the field way behind now, they could move those right up. To the property lines, and we wouldn't know about it because it's all self-filing. We would have no controls, is that correct, it's all done through the MNRF?
Through the Chair to Counselor Bryant, so a good question, um, that part's not under self-filing, that's under the. What's significant or not significant to warrant whether they circulate around for comments. And you can change things a little bit, um, I'm double checking, sorry, I'm gonna double check what I just said. There are two different documents, there's too much going, there's a lot going on here.
Removing or relocating portable.
Sorry, yes, that is in the self filing, I stand corrected, so yes, that's in there. So the criteria in that section. That they still have to comply with an environmental compliance, so they still have to comply with noise elements as they move it around, so they would still be addressing noise. And one of the other requirements is that there's no sensitive receivers situated uh, within certain distances. So you can't move it right up to somebody's backyard, because that's less than five hundred meters, so there's set standards still that they would have to meet. So if they want to move it, they still have to meet certain criteria, one of which is you can't just move it right up to somebody else's house, for example, so. They will still need to do work and they still can't just move it anywhere they want to. Uh, there will still be elements that they, I gotta, I can move it here or here, but I can't move it way over there, because that's gonna cause a problem for noise, for example.
Right, they are still governed by their site plans, but they don't comply with their site plans now, and if they're self-filing, we're gonna run into, I think, a lot more issues, I'm not. Being critical of your report, it's just things that are jumping out at me based on what I've seen over the years with gravel and. I I think this is very problematic, that's my personal opinion. And the fact that it's the comment to help reduce the burden on ministry staff, they're there to do that role, why are they? Looking to reduce their jobs and leave it to self-filing, the people that are gonna pay for this are the residents, and that's what really concerns me.
Definitely counselor uh, through the chair to the counselor, and that is why staff added the third bullet or third number. Um, you can't ignore that you have to have staff then to deal with these issues should something come up, so. Regardless of whether they do all these changes or not, they still need to make sure they are staffed appropriately to address the concerns. Um, I can't speak for why they're reducing staff costs, uh, why they were wanting to reduce the workload on staff, probably because like everyone else, they're having a hard time finding staff. If they're like anybody out there, every business and community out there is trying to find people to do work, and if you don't have it, what do you do, right? Um, but that's why we think it's critical that we added this point, that we we preface this that. The ministry still ensures they have staff to do with these issues, because. Regardless of whether they do the self-filing or not, and make changes or not, that issue still stands, whether operators are following the rules or not. That somebody is able to review and enforce.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Kudel, nope, it'll be, his question's been answered, Counselor Schwin.
I'm just pulling up Counselor Bryant's comments, I fully agree on number three. You have to have staff to. Please the problem ones. Um, I'm guessing the province's goal on this is to be able to concentrate staff on the problem high priority areas. I'm gonna be nice on in this case, that can be their goal and make better use for resources. Assuming that's the case. Um, number three makes a lot of sense for your force up, reinforce that with them, and number two makes a lot of sense to me, two as well. Number one, I admit, doesn't make sense to me, to me, five to ten percent is a rounding error. I don't know if ten trucks went by my yard or eleven. And if there's a twenty percent number, I'd be all over it saying, yeah, that's a huge difference. If you had a five or ten percent rounding error. I wonder if we're getting too far down the weeds and will. Miss out on those more important things like moving crushers and entrances. Permits, that type of thing.
Thank you, is there any other? Questions or maybe looking for clarification? Maybe I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'll seek some clarification, uh, recommendation number one, that the increases to the maximum annual tonnage by five percent, um, what is the? Existing. Maximum annual tonnage, or is that specific to each site? It's specific to you, so.
Yeah, though, yeah, through the through the chair to Counselor Kudel, it is specific to basically each site, there is basically a minimum. The smallest ones are about twenty thousand tones per year, um, but larger pits are running a hundred thousand, for example. Or something else or much more, so it it varies based on the pit itself and the operation, so that'll be written into their site plans. So. A small pit, yes, ten, five, ten percent is probably nothing, on a big pit, five to ten percent can be a fair number of trucks if you're running. A larger operation, for example.
Any other? Questions or discussion on this?
Uh, yeah, I said, I'm sorry, it took me a second to think of it, I think that as recommendation number one is written, um. Is is valid, because it's it's saying that's not necessarily that we're against the increase, that we're just saying that, hey, this is significant, like. So I I do tend to agree with that one, I think.
Just gonna let it germinate before I ask any other. Questions or or discussion on this? Seeing none, there is a recommendation uh, in the report, is there anyone who would like to move the recommendation, Counselor Bryant, is there anyone who would second it? Counselor Kudel, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you. All right, lastly, we have the Director of Infrastructure Services, Jared Poupay, to provide counsel with an overview of his report, Quality Management Systems Operational Plan.
Thank you, Chair Grant, and through you to council, uh, this report probably should have been here earlier, unfortunately, but just being a new council, we do require that council does endorse. Our quality management system that is contained in this report, uh, so we are asking for approval, committing to an endorsement of the operational plan that is a requirement for legislation. Uh, to provide safe drinking water to our residents, we're au- also authorizing the mayor clerk to sign the operational. Uh, plan on behalf of council and to delegate authority to endorse uh, future changes to the plan. A minor or administrative nature on behalf of council being the system owner, um, and uh, you were delegating that authority to top management. That would be the Director of Infrastructure Services as well as the Manager of Operations. Um, apologize for not bringing it earlier, but did want to get this in front of council, this is important. And uh, and I think the report was well done, and then we did provide our Quality Management System Operational Plan, which contains a lot of detailed information on. On all that is involved with our drinking water systems, uh, again, to reiterate plant or uh, things that would be. Uh, not caught under the delegation of authority would be regional initiatives. Such that they have undertaken in the last ten years, we have gone from eight drinking water systems down to four. Um, that was just through regional initiatives to look to improve uh, and enhance uh, the systems. And reducing then our requirements for reporting uh, and for testing, so all in all, good news for all ratepayers on the system from a regional perspective as well as. Township perspective, so wanted to be clear that those types of changes would flow through council and council would be notified. Of any major changes such as those are occurring, uh, at this point, we're not aware of any major changes that the region is looking to undertake. Uh, there would be a decommissioning at some point of the Isley uh, Wellhouse in Maryhill. Uh, but we have yet to receive word on when that may happen, but that was something that has been talked about uh, uh, in the past, so. With that, I would uh, be happy to try to enter uh, answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, is there any questions for Mr. Poupay? Mayor Shantz?
Thank you, um. Can you just clarify, uh, in number three? What is the difference between what's happening now, like, are you bringing every minor change to us currently?
Uh, no, uh, through your chair granted to uh, Mayor Shantz, no, we're not. It because there's a new council, it's imperative that we bring this council up to speed, so uh, in the past, we had uh, generally the same councils, we had. Only brought that forward when there was a turnover of council, so we are not currently doing that, we haven't done that, we have been doing all those types of administrative changes. Uh, on on behalf of council, so again, this probably should have come back to council early on in the term. Uh, but we were here now in in June, unfortunately, and and bringing this forward, but we have not had council endorse those minor changes, we have made those changes. And we get audited uh, both internally uh, to prepare us for external audits, and there are typically always uh, comments that that we make changes on. If there are staff changes, uh, it's always a plan based on improvement, so we're always looking to improve that. And those changes are dealt with at uh, from the top management perspective, and then we just updates uh, council through uh, our our required port uh, reporting. Um, annually.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kudel.
Thank you, Chair, through you to Director Poupay, um. Has anything changed from the previous version of this operational plan to this one now?
Uh, through your grant to Counselor Kudel, no- nothing of signi- of significance, no.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, there is a recommendation in this report, is there anyone who would like to move the recommendation, Counselor Kudel, is there a secondary? Counselor Bryant, any other discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried, thank you. This brings us to other business, uh, we do have uh, Ms. Reese here, who'll provide an overview of a letter from WAC with a request is.
Thank you, um, so the request that you have for in front of you is from the Woolwich Environmental Advisory Committee. And they've asked um, for the council to direct staff to do some additional research on one particular program. Um, I think this kind of brings up a two-part question. One is whether or not council wants to consider using the greening reserve for this type of uh, loan or any type of uh. Incentive type of program, and the second. Incentive type of program, and the second side of it, I would say is. Although council can direct staff to look specifically at this program, I think that there are other options out there for other types of programs that could also. Meet these same kind of requirements for greener homes. That maybe we would want to consider a more fulsome review of all of these types of programs. As well as through the financial side of it as well, and whether or not we even have the capacity to. Administer a loan type of program. At this point in time, we do have planning staff that can do a general review of programs, but we don't yet have a position specifically geared towards. Environmental and sustainability, so there is also an option that we could defer this type or if council could defer this type of work. Until we have that type of position available, so at this time, we act as requesting that. Council direct staff to do some additional research, and I'll leave that up to you to discuss.
Is there any questions or discussion? Counselor Cudell?
I I love research, I would love to have staff go back and see what it is that we could do, whether it be. Private loans or otherwise, you know, any progress on this file is good progress in my mind, so. It's kind of where I stand on that.
Counselor Schwinn?
Just to clarify, these private loans, this township lending money to private individuals for the solar panels, or is this? Council assignment program where private. Funders on the money.
Through through you, Chair Grant, this particular program would be looking at private loans and the. Township would be providing that funding through the greening reserve with an initial amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
And I believe the recommend or the the proposed resolution for this would be that it would just be an exploration of what would be the. The consequence or the the pros and cons of that, so from we X's perspective, it was just. A need for more information and to direct staff to kind of investigate that more. Mayor Shantz?
So for clarity, then, are they asking us to set aside a hundred thousand dollars for these private loans, or are they asking? For a staff report, looking at what the implications would be?
Do you, Chair Grant, that's correct, they would be looking for an exploration of whether or not we would want to consider this type of program with that money allocation.
Okay, so we wouldn't be, by approving this, we wouldn't be approving the hundred thousand dollars today, we would just be asking you to. Look at that and other options to encourage the use of solar panels in the township.
Yeah, you would be directing staff to do some work and researching.
Mr. Bredman?
Yeah, and and just further to that, through you, Madam Chair, to to Mayor Shantz is. If we did some additional work, you know, Deanne mentioned. You know, we'd comment on, you know, staffing capacity, and and also would also give an opportunity for. Mr. Patrick to talk about the realities of staffing and capacity and resources to. Do these types of loans, and and whether we would have the ability to do that, because, you know, I know. We've received information in the past on these types of programs, and and right now. I don't know how many are, you know, what we could find out is how many, if any, are operated at our level as opposed to like Halifax. And and large centers, right, and and, you know, we would need to understand what sort of resourcing. That they even require to implement things from, not just the program itself, but actually. You know, in effect, being like a bank.
And maybe just for some context, because I've sit on WAC, there was a presentation from Sandra Bray. On solar panels and these different programs, so the discussion was around a lot of lack of clarity, basically from WAC's perspective of. What those programs look like, how they're implemented, how they scale up or down depending on the size of. The city or the municipality, so it was really a request to kind of do that legwork. So that we could have a more fulsome discussion at council about the merits of that as a program. Counselor Schwinn?
I love solar panels. My experience right now is the current programs of net metering. Are almost, they almost be back for the solar panel, so. Most individuals who apply for regular loan at a bank. Didn't be able to qualify because it, there is a cash flow there. And it's not a great return like it was a number of years ago, but it's not new technology, we're not providing something new. That is well known at the state, ten years ago, it was a big difference. I thought we were fairly up to speed on solar panel and financing. As a green initiative.
Counselor Cudell?
Yeah, I think that the the loan may have. And and I'm not involved in the conversations, but it may be around access, not everybody has access to financial institutions to be able to. Afford a loan, especially with, you know, interest rates the way they're at. My expectation would be that staff would look at this initiative and see how it could be dispersed across Woolwich. That could be equally accessible for all, at least that would be kind of the hope, but we'll see.
Is there any discussion or would someone like to move a resolution to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to move through the motion to direct staff to go back and review this.
So I actually have recommended writing for this, so it would be that the council of the township of Woolwich considering a resolution. From the Woolwich Environmental Advisory Committee. Direct staff to do a further examination on private loans for solar panels and into that program. And then I think it would also include that the Climate Action Greening Reserve would be the potential source of that fund. Any discussion, Counselor Bryant?
Um, thank you, the one part I have a problem with is the hundred thousand dollar allocation, I can deal with the. Getting further information, but I don't like the funding part at the bottom, that's what's bothering me about it.
Mayor Shantz?
Me too, I'm I'm concerned that we're not. I I think we need to look at that fund, we've talked about whether we use it to finance a sustainability. Position and so. Allocating allocating it at this point, I think feels premature until we get some more information from staff. And I guess if I could ask staff. Is is this a doable thing in terms of time commitment?
Through you, Chair Grant, I think that this will take some time to put together, like I said at the beginning of this, we don't have a. Dedicated person to do this type of work, and we are pretty busy with other regular planning work. So I think that we can do the the research to come up with a recommendation on this specific program back to council, but. I would request that we could have a little bit of time to do that and come back in in the following year.
Then I think, Counselor Cudell?
Yeah, so just to clarify then, I'm not against some of the recommendations that came forth, so could we just adjust it to be? Request to council direct staff to do a further examination of private loans for solar panels to support transform water relief region initiatives, period?
Yep, I think I think that's maybe where we can just. Is there any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I see.
So that we have a motioner?
Deanne had something.
Oh, sorry, Deanne.
So just a quick comment, if there's not a desire to use this fund to allocate the money for this type of program. I I'm just questioning, is there another amount of money that council's gonna come up with, I don't want to. Do a bunch of research for something that's, there is not a desire to allocate the funds to.
Can I speak, I I I think that presumably the one hundred thousand dollars, if that's where we land on. Could come from the greening reserve, I think that. General consensus is we would just like to remove that from this recommendation. Perhaps it does come from the greening reserve, but I think that would be. Put back on staff to kind of come up with the best place for us to pull that from. Is that a fair assessment? I mean, presumably it's gonna come from that reserve fund if we do go ahead with this, right? I think that it was more than one hundred thousand dollars allocation that was kind of a roadblock.
So any other discussion? So we have a mover with Counselor Cudell, is there a secondary? Mayor Shantz, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is carried, thank you. So this brings us to council reports and updates, are there any that would need to come forward? Counselor Bryant?
It's not an update, but it's a question that was given to me by one of our residents. They've been trying to find out how much the Anova Board is paying their board members. He's not been able to get an answer, so I'm gonna put it out to the mayor, is there any way that a member of the public can find out the salaries for the board members? I know you said on the board, that's the only reason I'm targeting.
I can't answer that question directly, because I need to go.
You know, no, I know, that's why I'm putting it out there, maybe if you can look into it and get back to us, and then I can get back to this resident, no rush, I mean, if it's next week, that's fine, but. It's a question that was put to me, I'm going, I don't know. Yeah, this is why I've I put the question out, because I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other? Council reports or updates? All right, seeing none, is there, this brings us to the outstanding activity list, is there any discussion on the outstanding activity list? Also seeing none there, there is no notice of motion, this brings us to the adjournment. Of our meeting, is there anyone willing to move and second that adjournment, Counselor Cudell, seconded by Counselor Bryant, all those in favor? And that is carried. In closing, council would like to thank all those who participated or tuned in to the meeting tonight, council, please stay connected on Zoom until the live stream has stopped, good night, everyone.